Two minutes?
Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
So, did you see the answer? You saw the answer we got from Lester's office, right? So, I mean, circuit breakers, bus helps us. Yeah. The good thing is, we know we're not going to lose from what we have today, right? It's gonna go on. Right. But everybody else is getting so much more because of English language learner and...
Stand by.
Our echidus.
Alright, stand by. And five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 24th, 2019, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is being recorded, aired live on LCTV, and livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement that anyone recording the meeting, please disclose that they are doing so now. Please join us now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the great republic for which it stands, a lone nation under God, and the invisible liberty and justice of our...
Before, can you please remain standing, please? On Tuesday, September 17th, Wolf Swamp Elementary School paraprofessional Lisa Gore passed away. It was unexpected. Lisa worked in the LPS since 2011 and leaves her son Alan and son Michael, a 2017 LHS graduate. Please, a moment of silence in memory of Lisa Gore. Thank you.
Also, in remembrance of Lisa, the school committee, thanks to Gianna Allentuck putting it together, will be donating a basket of books to Wolf Swamp in the next couple of days. One of us will be delivering it, two of us, but happy to do so, but again, it's a big loss for LPS.
She was beloved by her Wolf Swamp family, and it was, it was nice to see the way the district pulled together on behalf of that family. Had the opportunity to attend the funeral services this week, and I think it was her sister who said that she was a champion of the underdog, and that's how she led her life personally and professionally, and it was, I thought, a really poignant and very accurate comment, so it was a nice, a nice service and a great celebration of her life. She'll be missed.
Thanks, Marty. Now, I'd like to welcome the school committee Student Advisory Council. This would be the first time we've met this year. Always a big, big part of our year is meeting with the students. They bring to light lots of issues that might not be at the forefront of what we're thinking or the forefront of what needs we're thinking about, even though we have, lots of us have kids in the schools as well, you know, we always uncover something new to work on, so I'll hand it off to the students. You might wanna introduce yourselves, give your name, grade, and a little bit about yourself if you want, since everybody's kind of meeting for the first time.
So, I was here two weeks ago, but I'm Armin Asik. I'm a junior and I'm the full-time member.
My name's Owen McGee, I'm a senior, and I'm a part-time member of the Student Advisory Council.
My name's Maxim Tanushkin. I'm a part-time member. I'm a junior.
Awesome. Take it away.
Alright, so, in the community, we're doing some outreach events. Like, last Thursday, we had our back-to-school night, which was a good chance for the new parents to learn more about high school and like, the expectations for it. And then, looking ahead, we have many events planned for this fall. We have the Senior Class Panoramic, which will be taken on October 10th for the yearbook, one of our like, major publications for this school. On the 21st, the students and teachers from Japan will be visiting. And on the 26th, we have the Key Club Halloween event, which is held annually. And then, the school senior class play rehearsals and auditions have been taking place, and the play will be back to 80s and will be put on from November 21st to the 23rd.
Okay, and with what we're doing to engage the student body, right now, we've been gifted a new suggestion box by the graduated senior braggy. The suggestion box will be placed outside of the high school's library to receive student suggestions, and we hope that this will engage the student body and give them a voice by letting students submit suggestions. They can be made anonymous. This allows for the student leadership, as well as administration, to hear the voices of students at LHS. We promote and encourage the use of the box to guide the changes that need to be made in order to make LHS a better, happier, and safer community for all our students. This box helps present new issues that we may not be aware of and gives opportunities to hear different points of view throughout the school. Accompanying the box, there'll be a flyer promoting the use of the box and explaining the importance of student participation. And aside from the box, we're also working on other avenues of engagement for the future.
Have you guys seen the play, Senior Class Play?
No, maybe as an extra, but not as a lead.
Play a tree in the background.
So, do we have any questions for our Student Advisory Council?
I think the suggestion box is a great idea. I was wondering how you're gonna let all the students know about it.
Good question. We haven't really...
I mean, an all-school email would definitely be a possibility.
Oh, great.
Um, also discuss like, making a flyer, having a big one, maybe even a poster right behind the box.
Likely putting it up on the TVs around the school.
Excellent.
I believe something like that was done previously. Suggestion box has been done previously before.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Can you just talk a little bit about how the school committee, advisory committee, sort of fits into the whole scheme of student government at Long Meadow High? And how you work with class officers and Mr. Dunkerly? Is that something you can talk to us a little about?
Yeah, so I think it's a good chance for like, the student issues to kind of be brought to like, an environment like this, like, they can, so they plan the events and they can take that feedback and like, talk to us about it, maybe even like, hear more about how like, student life can be improved or like, changed. And, and like, we're there to like, bring it to the attention of like, more members, I should say.
As far as I understand, we're like, a good avenue for when students have kind of wider issues that isn't really handled by the administration. For example, a few, a good few years ago, with the whole change of how much the parking cost at LHS, I know that that was an issue that was brought by this avenue, and they ended up significantly reducing... The, the, the school committee ended up significantly, significantly reducing the cost of parking. So, for issues like that, that students would like to bring to the school committee is what we need to do.
So, you have observed anything first three weeks of school that you're saying, wow, that just needs to be changed?
I mean, I'm not sure if this is a school committee issue, but there are a lot of bathroom closures. I'm, I'm not sure if that's something that the school committee can deal with, but that's something I've noticed.
You mean, oh, it's not just the swimming lane one, or more?
Well, I believe there are two different issues, but also the one in the cafeteria has been closed. I believe it was recently reopened, but...
So, we had some plumbing issues in the cafeteria, restrooms, and then the, the pool hallway. I think it was a matter of supervision and, and at the same time, making sure that students had access to a nearby restroom, but I think if that's, if that becomes an issue, certainly, I know Mr. Dunkerly would be attentive to that, but we're, but that, that's something that I know Mr. Landers has updated us on as well, so thank you for that.
So, the group last year brought a lot of topics and ideas to us, and I'm wondering if they've kept the list, because one that was not successful that I'm remembering is changing the parking lot and changing the entrance because of what a nightmare it is. So, I'm wondering if you all have maybe, like, we keep, when we do our, the budgeting, it's what things weren't funded, if maybe you guys could get a hold of what things weren't done that they wanted in previous years and look into it again, and somebody can take up the mantle of changing the entrance in the parking? It might make you very popular if you could fix that.
Glenn may have even left the blueprint.
He did have the blueprint.
Any other questions, concerns? Do you guys have anything else for us? Alright, well, thank you very much. We look forward to the next meeting, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And if you have any questions in the interim, funnel into Armin.
Alright. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have correspondence?
An email from Liz Callias, Senior Class PAC representative, inviting the school committee members to attend the LHS PAC meetings. An email from Cecilia Allentuck dated September 19th, 2019, suggesting American Sign Language is ASL be a language taught in school.
Great. Approval of minutes? We have a motion?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the September 10th, 2019 school committee meeting as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, a call for vote. All in favor? All opposed? All abstaining? Visitor comments? I do not see any visitors. Do we have any school committee announcements or recognition? Yes, John?
The back-to-school night was awesome. The, the teacher, like, it was just amazing to see how hard the, all of the staff and educators and the teachers and the students, I mean, just the, each classroom I went to was just another like, you know, just reminder of how much the teachers care and how supportive they are and how hard the students really do work, so it was, it was awesome.
Nice. Anybody else? I guess I have just a few things. One, I really appreciate the letter from Cecilia. Near and dear to my heart, a wife who has hearing loss in one ear, who also has learned ASL to do therapy. So, so it's something that's been part of our lives for a long time. So, I guess I would ask that the curriculum or that the policy or curriculum sub, we don't even have one now, do we? We could do this under policy, yeah. So, just policy, take it up. Next time we meet, talk about what would be the appropriate approach to, to taking it on. You know, I was thinking about it, you know, how, how could we get it up and running? What's the demand? You know, and what's, how do we implement it? And, you know, one of the fastest ways I think we could get this up and running, if it's possible, would be more of a club format to start with, with a, you know, try and get them on for some money and an advisor next year, and based upon the popularity, if we can fund it, that, and you know, maybe it's a two, three-year plan to get it into a full curriculum perspective, obviously, but I don't know if that makes sense or not, but that's just kind of my comments. But I appreciate her putting it out there, 'cause I, I agree with you that, you know, there is a definite need in the community for that skill.
And Dr. Guile was super gracious. He responded right away. I had forgot to copy him on the email that I sent to you, so I sent him the letter. And he also suggested a club format, you know, after school, and he was gonna, he was gonna touch base with Cecilia, so...
Great.
Thank you for that.
Any other announcements, recognitions? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna beg your indulgence and go to administrative reports.
Okay. So, there was a written report in your packet, and I'll just highlight a few items for you. Begin, today was the public release of MCAS results from the spring of 2019. We're in the process of reconstructing those results and trying to sort them out, and our hope would be that we would bring back a report to the committee. Probably end of October, maybe, is when we, when we normally do that. The, sort of, the headline that you're seeing today is that the, the high school MCAS, it was the Next Gen MCAS, it was the first time that our high school students took the Next Generation MCAS test. And across the state, we saw that there were the same percentage of students passed the exam as part of the competency determination to graduate, but there were a smaller percentage of students that scored in the top two reporting categories. Previously, it was advanced and proficient. Now, it's exceeding expectations and meeting expectations. So, the, the tests have become more challenging, but they, they sort of set the passing cut score at about the same place, so that's one thing that we're looking at. And if the committee has, as we, as we analyze the results, if the committee has anything particularly that they'd like us to take a look at, to report back to you on, let us know, and we'd be happy to do that for you. In Dialogue, you recall, this is the, the online platform that allows for town-wide deliberations, and so, our town moderator has been active in training select staff and getting us up to speed. In your packet, there is a draft, I cautioned that it is only a draft, a draft of what we're calling the briefing materials for that in Dialogue deliberation on our middle schools. So, you can take a look at that and see if you have any feedback. There's still time to amend that document. School committee opportunities, if any school committee member is available on the afternoon of Thursday, October 3rd, Leaf will be presenting to the grantees at 3:00 in the, at the high school. So, let me know if you're able and willing to attend that. And then, also, Challenge Success, October 15th, put in a plug for that. This is the organization that partners with school districts on redefining success in helping families and school districts understand how to achieve sort of a healthy balance between academics and, and life in general. So, that's October 15th, 7:00 PM, at the Long Meadow High School Auditorium. So, finally, October 15th is a busy day for us. It's a professional development day, but it's also the day that the school building authority, Mass School Building Authority, will be visiting Long Meadow to tour our two middle schools. So, I think Chairman Ray has indicated that he could represent the school committee, but it is the MSBA's senior study team that will be with us on the 15th. Our committees are up and running. We had a great meeting of the Curriculum Leadership Council today. Last week, a meeting of the Parent Curriculum Advisory Council and some, some robust discussions on student learning and how we should view and perhaps reshape our understanding of that. So, that's it. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Marty? Alright, seeing none, I'm gonna go... Sorry, Kevin. That was in there that you didn't talk about was the education funding, and I assume that's gonna come up later.
Coming up in our agenda, so...
I'm segueing into that right now. Sorry. No problem. So, begging indulgence again, we're gonna go backwards a little bit to the tax ceiling discussion, which is gonna cover the education funding as well. So, Marty, do you have something you wanna share with the committee?
Sure, yeah.
And then, a member of the community, Pete Landon, has been very active in the educational funding issue and the other issues surrounding the town right now financially, the tax ceiling that we're up against, and, you know, we're hoping pushed out a while, but, you know, we're still cognizant of it, working it out, and as a, as a town, I represent the school committee on the tax ceiling as my assigned committee. So, we just all got the newest legislation from Senator Lester's office from Friday. We've been trying to digest it over the weekend. We have been in contact with both Representative Ashes and Senator Lester's office, as well as the Mass Budget and Policy Institute, as well as mass teachers and other interested parties in the Long Meadow success formula. We have heard back from Senator Lester's office. I'll let Marty give an update on what we found out from, from that. I can tell you, we have been actively involved with our entire legislative delegation for a long time now. Senator Lester, Senator Lewis, who is the primary author of the, the legislation, met with Marty, myself, a bunch of other superintendents, and school committee chair back in May. We brought to them the issues that we felt were very germane and more regionalistic than the issues that affect funding throughout the entire state. Western Mass, the foundation budget is tied to housing values. Western Mass has had a issue with stagnant housing values, where they have not risen like the rest of the state has risen. And, you know, I brought that, that exactly up to Senator, to Senator, both senators that were there. It hadn't been something I think they had heard before that, that day, and I think the comment we had from Senator Lewis was, wow, we didn't know that. Well, let's take that back and have a conversation about it. We know, since then, we have definitely been in touch with both Senator Lester's office and with Representative Ash's office, and we will continue to be and continue to reach out to all the stakeholders that we can to promote and try and get as much as we can for, for the Long Meadow community. The funding program that, that is on our desk will definitely benefit us. Will it benefit other districts? Possibly more, yes. I mean, there is a big component in here for English language learners and economically disadvantaged communities. But, you know, from what we have seen, what we've got back, Marty will give an update on that. So, Marty, I'll hand it over to you.
Sure, yeah. So, yeah, I think it's, it's not an exaggeration to say that this is a, a long-awaited piece of legislation, and it's very important, as Armin suggested, that we understand the components of it and think carefully about what it means to Long Meadow Public Schools and the town of Long Meadow. And so, before we dive into the legislation or talk about the legislation, I just wanted to provide a, you know, broad strokes explanation of the problem that this piece of legislation is trying to address. And I think the committee members are familiar with this, but this might be helpful to anybody who happens to be watching at home, so if you just bear with me. So, this slide, this is it. I've one slide and done. Won't be that by PowerPoint, I promise, but this slide, I think, tells an important story for us. And so, what you see here, I mean, just kind of break down the components, and then we can talk about the story that it tells. So, the, the black line here is actual net school spending, and it's over the, over the past 20 or so years. And you'll notice that it's risen steadily. An important component of school funding, however, is Chapter 78 in the red. And you'll notice that, although net school spending, there's been a lot of pressure on us to meet the needs of kids over the last 20 years or so. Chapter 78 has largely stagnated. The blue line represents what the foundation budget, this is the level of commitment that the state says is minimally adequate to educate a child in Long Meadow Public Schools. And so, that, that foundation budget calculation has risen somewhat steadily, but it really hasn't kept pace with net school spending. So, the, the important story here is that the difference between the top of the red bar and net school spending is the amount that Long Meadow, the town of Long Meadow, taxpayers of Long Meadow are responsible for. And so, that gap, which, you know, going back 25 years or so, was, was smaller and has steadily grown, so that the, increasingly, the burden of supporting Long Meadow Public Schools has fallen on the local community. And there's been kind of widespread consensus, I would say, that Chapter 70 needs to better address the, the needs of Long Meadow Public Schools, or the needs of public schools in general. And so, the legislation that you have a copy of and that you have a fact sheet on attempts to address the inadequacy of Chapter 78. It attempts to close the gap between what schools are actually spending and what the state is able to provide. And it does that by addressing the elements that make up that foundation budget. So, this, the calculations that go into the foundation budget haven't really kept pace with modern realities. And Armin listed several of those. The reality of educating English language learners, the reality of educating students with disabilities, the realities of paying benefits to employees, the realities of providing access to technology nowadays. So, there's, there's certainly a lot of realities that the foundation budget doesn't respond to. So, the Student Opportunities Act is a very, very important piece of legislation that I think we collectively need to understand and think about what it might mean to Long Meadow Public Schools. And can, the question for us is, can the legislation help ease the burden on local communities? Can it ease the burden on Long Meadow taxpayers? We hope that the answer is yes. So, that's, that's sort of the story that, that graph, I think, tells. And, you know, it has, this has been a, a central focus, I'd say, of the Tax Ceiling Task Force, that as the town seeks to address the potential for Long Meadow to hitting the tax ceiling, any relief that we might enjoy from Chapter 78 would be, would be welcome and helpful. So, I'll stop there, and hopefully, that's some helpful background info and maybe sets the stage for the broader conversation.
So, I'd like to, can we hold on to questions? One sec. Pete, you wanna come with the microphone? And so, I told Mr. Landon, who has been very active sending emails to all of us about the issues surrounding education funding, to, to come before us, just to give us a short, you know, it's, I figured, you know, no more than 15 minutes back, you know, presentation, maybe some questions, just talking about what his experience is with the budgets process, and, you know, maybe some of the... and, you know, maybe some of the ideas he had around the issue. Again, the information we got, he got it all the same time I did on Friday. It's really new, so the formula has changed pretty much in the last 48 hours. And acknowledged by Senator Lester that it has changed in the last 48 hours. So, Mr. Landon?
Thank you very much, Armand. Basically, if we could step back a little bit, oh, my eye patches. I had a cloudy lens at 11 o'clock this morning, and at 11:30, 23 minutes later, I had a clear lens, thanks to moderate ophthalmology and cataract surgery. So, and I can see also. The model that we're working on is obviously to decrease spending for the town and to increase revenue, and that will keep the ceiling of $25 per thousand away from us and keep everything functioning well, where everybody can deal with their contractual obligations and the longer-term pension and healthcare obligations, because when you run out of money, those fixed costs impact you and force decisions that you, which could affect service levels in the town. It's an unpleasant scenario we're trying to avoid. But basically, the intellectual framework, all the material I've read is that in the state of Massachusetts, we had a $44 billion budget right now, and that $14 billion of that is being spent for Medicaid, and that's on our 50% portion. The federal government pays another 14, and that was $4 billion 15 years ago. The chart that Marty showed, if you collectively took all of Chapter 70, local aid, 15 years ago was $4 billion, and today it's $5 billion. So, we're talking about Medicaid going from 4 to 14 out of 44 total for the state, and we're talking about Chapter 70. If you go back to 1993, when MIRA, M is the acronym for the Educational Reform Act, went into place, it's gone up a billion, $1 billion. Thank God, the current administration has slowed down the Medicare line for the first time, and I don't know, you know, Baker has a background in healthcare, how he did it. It's amazing. So, that's what we're all up against, and it's not just this community, it's every community in the state. Local aid as a percentage of the budget 15 years ago for the state was 38%. Today, local aid for the budget, I have a chart, I failed to bring over tonight, is down from 38% of the state budget to 14%. And that includes education, transportation, what we call Chapter 90 for roads and bridges, and there's a category called unrestricted. That, Long Meadow pays what Marty talked about here, that, this is, I have an interpretation of the top line. That, to me, is the Long Meadow Foundation budget. I mean, that's in the wisdom of the school committee and the town meeting, is what it takes to, the foundation budget that Marty just described as somewhat inadequate, because it hasn't been adjusted for a long time, is, talks about adequate education. The top line is high-performing education, like we performed here in Long Meadow. So, the goal, of course, is to keep that high performing. So, basically, I have this other deep feeling that home rules a myth. When you take all the income and sales tax, the state, and keep it, and then set the rules on how you're going to get some of it back, and you leave the property tax only to deal with education and all the other town services we have, and then you put a $25 cap on it, when you're running up against it, you say you can't have it anymore. For a town of Long Meadow, which has AA II credit rating, this is not, this is a set of logic that belies me. You've got two state policies converging on each other and want to shut down the operation of services for a town that's performed well. And Mark Gold has done some really good studies that shows we're not a big spending town either. You know, recently, we decided to put an adult center in and get a DPW going that needed badly. So, those investments are normal for other cities and towns. So, I probably could sit back now and just ask if you have any questions. The one thing, let's call the Student Opportunity Act is the one you, Marty distributed for you, that's a, the tab on that is the $1.5 billion. And the reason they spread it out over seven years is the state can't afford it. It's a 27% increase in one line item, and they're going to take and they're going to put, what, 225 a year if they straight line it, out to $1.5 billion over the seven years. And they're going to be able to address things like underfunding of these line items where healthcare was not adequately addressed, updated, and it's going to deal with the language situation. It's going to deal with the huge Unfunded Achievement Gap Act of 2010. So, on top of the Education Act of 1993, you have the Achievement Gap Act of 2010. That identified all the non-performing schools. What do we have, 50 in the state now? And what they found out was they didn't, couldn't correct them that easily. That's why it was kind of exciting to see the headline in today's paper, where Springfield and another community had dressed a non-performing school and brought it up, because those tools are going to cost money. So, basically, what you have here is taxpayers of Long Meadow paying 90% of the Long Meadow Foundation budget. And you have, in other gateway communities, there's 35 of them that have massive socioeconomic problems, you'll have the Chapter 70 money paying 90% of their budget. So, one town, one city I know is at 440 on their school budget, and they get 400 from the state, and they get 40, that is their portion that they need to put in by a formula. So, we're really pushing hard to not let that achievement gap whack the number-one status of education. And so, then we got this odd situation for Long Meadow, stuck in the middle of this whole debate for all these good things we're doing, and we're facing a, where they keep the money, by and large, and, you know, we get eight, nine million back in between transportation and Chapter 70, education, and about a million four in unrestricted. So, I think the labor unions and everybody have been very excited about doing, closing the achievement gap, and I think, I'm personally very excited about closing the achievement gap, but what they didn't do is what Marty said at the tax ceiling meeting the other day was, they didn't expand the pie enough so that the high-performing communities, particularly those that are facing a $25 ceiling, have room to go right through it. So, that's what we're trying to do, is figure out the specifics of that in the Tax Ceiling Committee, and it's, you might end up doing it incrementally. I don't think that, the big fix is, of course, is get rid of the ceiling on $25, but politically, how do you do that? We don't have a senator who's, you know, if east-west rail, you know, is a passion of somebody, right? Does anybody have a passion for getting beyond the $25 and giving more property taxes to the Long Meadow residents? I haven't met that passionate person yet, and so, we'll see how that evolves over time. Any questions?
Open the floor for questions or comments. Kevin?
You want to debate? Is that what you wanted?
No, I don't want to debate. No, I, I think this is, this is good information, I think, to get out to the community, for everybody here to understand the issue. For me, you know, I think the, I'm torn at points, and I think, you know, Pete and I have had some healthy debates on this in the recent future or recent past. You know, the one thing I'm torn about, and I think Pete makes a very good, a very good comment on, is Massachusetts is number one for education in the country right now, and that is mostly because of the high-performing districts, not just ours, but, you know, Wolverhampton, Amherst, you know, there's other districts around that are high performers but aren't too far off from the same problem that we are, too far from now. And unless the state does something to help the top districts, I mean, you want to raise the tide for everybody, right? And instead of bringing the other down to that, you know, that regression or that line, you don't want to bring every, you know, you don't want it to come like this, you want everybody to rise. And that this formula helps us, but it doesn't help, it doesn't accelerate it enough to help us, I think.
When you go through all the ways you can increase your foundation budget, I mean, the foundation budget for 2,800 students like we have, for a gateway city with all its socioeconomic issues, poverty, language, blah, would be a lot more, because the way they build that, and then if, so that's how a lot of the dollars go to solve those needs. What happens out in suburban communities that are high-performing without those socioeconomic issues to that level, the only way we get into the game at all is they put a minimum in there, and it's 17.5% of your foundation budget is what you get in Long Meadow. So, the little orange line at the bottom is pretty close to 17.5%. So, the one proposal that got me passionate was to, over seven years, increase that to 35% for the high-performing communities, and that's 2.5% a year, ironically. And that would take us from currently $5.8 million Long Meadows portion of Chapter 70 towards $12 million seven years out, which is, what, 2,027? Yeah, budget, 27 budget.
Correct. So, your call to action on that would be us advocating with our legislative delegation to do that?
Right. And that has not been vetted by the full tax committee, so I'm out here speaking as a citizen, I guess, as this is an idea I throw on the table, because I don't think there's any other way, the formula, the way it's set up can work for Long Meadow.
Okay.
The other, the other, yeah, anyway.
Questions?
I have a question.
Comments?
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
In the beginning, was it, was the Medicare or Medicaid just anecdotal, showing that we went from 4 to 14? Is that something that the senators...
That's for real, I got the chart.
No, no, I know it is, for real, but that's based on our decisions as a state of what we're going to do and what we didn't. We obviously prioritize this versus this, which isn't wrong, it's just we prioritize this. So, we didn't prioritize education, didn't let that grow. Are the senators talk, I mean, is it, was that just more anecdotal to let us know that, or is that something where we think we've overspent there and we should be changing there too and saying that to our senators?
No, I think that...
That was just completely anecdotal?
Well, if you're progressive, you want universal healthcare, that number's going to go up.
Yeah.
And if you, Baker, how he flattened it, you know, I don't know who got hurt or who didn't get hurt, but they did flatten it for the first time ever, otherwise, they wouldn't have been able to do a $1.5 billion education bill.
Yeah.
It would have, half a billion of that would have been pulled...
I was just wondering, I didn't know if the connection was so more anecdotal.
Jamie, why don't I send the legislative security committee, the chamber of commerce, we saw the first proposed budget for Medicaid for the state at $60 million, and we were told that we should support it. It was a Romney universal care provision. 60 million became quickly 600 billion, became now 14 billion. So, we, the state's taken over healthcare, and there's probably a lot of deserving citizens who are getting better healthcare.
So, has the Tax Steering Committee asked our senators why we dec, if we have this need, it sounds like there's a lot of high-performing towns that have this need, why do we, I guess I would be asking my senator, why do we, as a state, decrease our state taxes? It makes, it makes...
Oh, decrease?
We did. We did this year. I don't know why, but, I mean, we seem to have all this need, but we don't have the funding to make, what Armin was saying, is make everyone go up, but we just decreased our taxes as a state.
The sales tax went from 5.2 to 5.1.
No, no, state income tax went down as well. So, it just seems...
I mean, income tax, yeah.
Yeah.
The sales tax...
So, do we talk about that in the tax, I mean...
That was a formula that was in the bill from years back.
Yeah, but...
You could override it.
All the stuff could be changed.
Hey, if you do Soak the Rich bill, it's something that Lisa, it just seems...
Yeah, I mean, there's a bunch of stuff that was thrown out in the Tax Ceiling Task Force meetings.
But the Medicare was more anecdotal. I didn't know if you were trying to connect it, because I wasn't quite following that part of it, but I got it.
Well, I think you're connecting the fact that $14 million...
We spent a lot of money.
Right, we spent a lot of money on some area, which would take away from being able to spend areas' money and others.
And we are one of the best states in the union for Medicare, Medicaid, as well as schooling. So, we're, we spend a lot there, so we're better. We spend a lot on education, so we're better. So, I was just wondering. That was it.
But with all that given, and with everything that I said given, how do you get out of this fine?
I agree, I know.
How do you get there? You know, we got to answer that question. That tax committee's been meeting for, going on two years, and I haven't seen any hard proposals, and we're now four years away.
Yeah. Kevin?
I fear if we don't let our friends in the hall come in, we're going to get overrun.
Oh, okay.
I'm happy to delay my question until after...
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
But thank you, Mr. Landon.
Thanks, Pete.
Thank you.
Are you going to have to, are you going to continue the discussion after?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take questions after, after the discussion, because I also think we will need to refer this to finance sub for a call to action on asking for additional funding, at least putting the ask out there.
Yeah. We'll do our special presentation, then come back.
Yep.
Okay.
Wow. This is exciting. Five hundred wins. Five hundred. Five hundred. Yes. I can't believe it. Yeah. I can't believe it. Over who needs it. I got shirts. I got shirts. I got shirts.
Well, you've kind of been in here for the funding.
You need to tell. We have seats up front, that'll be fine.
Look at the shirts.
Yeah.
So, we appreciate the committee pausing its important business for some equally important business, and we're obviously pleased and proud at this moment, and you're getting some sense why we're so pleased and proud. We're so fortunate to have one of the finest field hockey coaches in the country, leading our young men and women, for young women, for so long. So, Ann Simon recently achieved the distinction of her 500th career victory as a field hockey coach, and so we have some special guests to help us honor Ann. And Representative Ash, you want to get us started?
I think you were going to...
Okay.
Thanks, absolutely. Hi, thank you. I'm Lisa Shadi, I'm the assistant principal at Long Meadow High School. It is my privilege and honor to thank my friend first and foremost, and I'm going to try to not cry out for her, because she's been amazing, and you can see that by the student athletes that came for her tonight. So, I want to first thank them for also coming tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, so very much so.
Thank you. Nice job.
So, as Superintendent O'Shea said, we are here to celebrate 500 wins. It doesn't happen accidentally. We are most and very proud of the culture that Ann Simon has set for the district, for our school, for our student athletes, and our entire community. She is known nationwide, she is. I had the privilege to coach with her, and it was one of the biggest highlights of my career. I've also had the privilege to teach with her, so I can say that that's also an honor and a privilege. How do you get 500 wins? First, you have a coach who is an award-winning, current-schooled teacher and educator. You're welcome, because you are. That is very forefront in the coaching. She leads it through the education and that example first and foremost, and field hockey is important, but she never lets the student athletes forget that they are student athletes. She has spent 39 years, she's going to hate me for saying that, but 39 years she has been our Long Meadow High School field hockey coach. I talked to her last night, she gave me a number, I tried to convince her and added up five more years on that number. We're still in negotiations at Patriot Park, so we'll talk later on that. She has mentored over, I tried to calculate it, and the best I could come up with is over 1,500 student athletes in that time.
Wow.
And that's probably about it. Some of you may or may not know, she also hosts youth tournaments, youth clinics every single year to keep that program going and to foster and show them what it is to be part of Long Meadow field hockey. So, that is something that keeps our program going and keeps the young people involved in the community. To me, it's not surprising that she has 500 wins and her student athletes have performed so well. How did they get there? They got there through 18 league championships, 14 Western Mass titles, eight consecutive Western Mass titles since 2011, and six appearances of the state tournament. And that is amazing. Most people like to go to one of those, and they've gone to a whole heck of a lot. We're extremely proud. Most importantly, Coach Simon to the student athletes and to their parents and the community at home, what she, I noticed most about her is her dedication to the student athletes. She is compassionate, she is sincere, she is empathetic, she is supportive, and she is their strongest advocate. She will speak up when need be, and does it on behalf of the young ladies on her team. I am so proud that she is a coach of Long Meadow High School, and most importantly, she's my friend. Congratulations. at home, what she, I noticed most about her is her dedication to the student athletes. She is compassionate, she is sincere, she is empathetic, she is supportive, and she is their strongest advocate. She will speak up when need be and does it on behalf of the young ladies on her team. I am so proud that she is a coach of Long Meadow High School and most importantly, she's my friend. Congratulations.
I was here for the budget meeting, but I guess I'll say, I guess I missed that. I too wanna recognize Coach Simons and agree wholeheartedly, you know, what both of you said. I'm here professionally, but also personally, you know, our daughter had the opportunity to play for Coach for three years and I know all the girls here can attest to, I heard all the stories when they're, when they're in middle school coming up, they have this fear of Coach Simons, like, oh my god, we dread it, we have these tryouts, but by the time they make the team and their junior, sophomore, junior, senior year, they have such a deep admiration and love and respect for her. I've never seen that before for a coach and you can see these girls truly, you always hear we wanna win for Coach, but you can tell that they, they truly do wanna win for the Coach. Of course, they want the win, but, but you give them so much and it is appreciated by not only the students, but by the parents, by the faculty and by everybody in town. So it is my pleasure to present you with a citation from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I will read it out, "Be hereby known to all that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Coach Ann Simons in recognition," I'll take my glasses, I never used to have to do this. 39 years, we'll do that, right?
Absolutely.
"Coach Ann Simons in recognition of obtaining the incredible mark of 500 wins as head coach of the Long Meadow Girls Field Hockey Team over the past 39 years while helping prepare our young ladies to become strong players, confident young women, and role models in our community. The entire membership extends its very best wishes in the hope of future con fortune, continued success in all your endeavors." And again, being able to go to the games, to watch you, to watch your interaction with the students, with our daughter and with so many others and a lot of the girls that I know on this team, it really is heartwarming to see how much these girls get from you and how it carries on. Our daughter's in, just so happens that Springfield College, the shirt she's wearing, but everything you've done really does transcend and carries them through, so, and not just as a player, but as a person. So I could not be more proud and more happy to present this citation to you and to wish you all the success in the world, whatever you do, however long you stay here, you're like our Miki Bets. Congratulations. All right, as you were.
I have to speak?
You can, if you'd like.
Well, okay. So Lisa called me last night and I go, "Well, do I have to speak?" And she goes, "Well, they probably wanna hear from you." So I'm the type of person that I just, if I don't have anything written down, I'll just babble on forever and we don't want that to happen, 'cause I know your time is precious. So I did write something and it's very short, 'cause I'm very respectful of your time. So here we go, I don't know if this works, but it's okay, you can hear me. So anyway, it's been a very emotional week for me and forget the 39 years, just this last week has been a whirlwind. I'm very appreciative of all the support that I've had and I just love my, my players and I love my team, I just, I just want you to know that and the parents. I've loved being here at Long Meadow. So here we go. I wanna thank the school committee, Superintendent O'Shea and the administration team at our high school. You honor me here tonight, but I should be the one honoring you. If it wasn't for all hardworking, focused, determined student athletes that I have participated in field hockey along with their supportive parents, I probably wouldn't be here today. 39 years ago, the legendary Bob D'Agostino hired a 21-year-old to lead the Lady Lancers. I promised him two things, that I would always give 110% effort and that we would always get better every day. I would have to say that those promises have been kept and that I am so, so proud and honored to be the leader of one of the most successful athletic teams at this school and in the state. Thank you for coming out tonight, everybody, and celebrating our accomplishments, I really appreciate it. Okay. Thank you. Yes, it's time to go. Thank you very much. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you, Coach.
Um, no, I think I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right, let's take some fun tomorrow, guys. She's back.
She's back. All right, we are just taking a short pause while the room is cleared.
I almost believed you.
I think they, they took Pete out with them.
He was crowd surfing. All right, so bringing back the conversation back, first off, that was an awesome moment. You know, congratulations to the coach. I mean, just looking at her, you can tell how emotional she was and, you know, how loving she is to the program and, you know, that's just indicative of the Long Meadow Public Schools community, so it's a, you know, it's a great atmosphere for, for our kids, parents, and the entire community. So bringing the, back into the tax ceiling discussion, I know we're holding off some comments or questions and I'll open the floor back up for those now. Kevin?
If we go back to that chart, if that's okay. So I just wanna make sure I'm understanding that correctly. So the blue lines.
Yep.
The state says this is the minimum you need to do to educate a student in the state of Massachusetts.
To adequately educate a student, yes.
So the reality is for Long Meadow, that line, that bar has nothing to do with what we do in Long Meadow because we said like, no, 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 and I think Pete said it right, like, our Long Meadow foundation budget is the black line.
Correct.
And so whatever the blue line is, if it's below the black line, it's essentially irrelevant to us because we say we have to do more than that. The only time it would become relevant to us is if that blue bar got higher than the black line and then we'd have to spend more money to do what the state mandated. But right now, what the state mandates is below what we're saying we wanna do as a community.
The blue line or the foundation budget's not going to change. What's talking, what they're really talking about is the red line of chapter 70.
And again, that's what I'm, I'm trying to say, like, as far as if you're thinking about this at home, just like wipe the blue line away because it kind of-
I'd qualify it a little bit, I'd say that if they can come up with a better formula to adequately represent what it really costs to provide an adequate education for students, the blue bar raises and correspondingly, chapter 78 would rise as well.
Okay, so those two things are linked.
So they're linked, so to the extent that the foundation budget formula is fixed to reflect modern realities, chapter 78 would increase correspondingly and provide some relief to-
Got it.
But Pete did say it well, that Long Meadow, like most communities, spends above what is minimally required or what, or what has been defined as adequacy. And more affluent communities spend more above what is minimally required than, than those that, you know, struggle, so.
Well, and that gets to the second thing that I wanted to make sure we're all clear about, which is, I mean, this is a snapshot of our town. It's always useful to see what your peers are doing and I feel like we've heard previously that we're doing well in terms of our per pupil spending. There are plenty of Eastern Mass districts that spend way more, including there are places that spend less than we do, but if you could just give us a little perspective of how do we look in relation to our peers as, you know, this graph, this graph for other towns, what would it look like?
So what you'd see is a smaller gap between the blue bar and net school spending. So Long Meadow spends a higher percentage above what is minimally required than most other towns. That would change when you get into some of these more affluent communities in the eastern part of the state, like you said. Per pupil expenditures, I don't know, I don't have a, I don't have any information at my fingertips on that and we could get that for you. I think the reality is that what's required to educate a child in one district might be different than in another district because the urban schools have different realities than we do and the Eastern Mass schools have different realities than we do. So there might be some apples to oranges comparisons there, but, but that's probably, to your point, I think that's worth us getting some information on that so you can see what our per pupil expenditures look like compared to our peers.
And some of, some of those differences would be the tax base in town is what drives some of that. So when you get an Eastern Massachusetts community like Concord or Lexington, basically their higher values help them to make that, that spread smaller.
So just a final point, which is, like, if we were to look at graphs for other towns-
And you can, you can go on Desi and pull this up.
But I guess I'm just curious, are we an outlier or if we think about our peers that we associate with, are we similar to our peers?
You would see almost an identical pattern in comparable communities. I'd say that's safe to say. Tom, anything you wanna add?
Did we forward the charts from, from Mark Gold as well or no?
No.
Okay, we'll make sure the committee gets those as well, 'cause there's some good information on those that shows like-
There were definitely charts in the tax ceiling thing, they were kinda hard to re-add.
Yeah, we'll get to the original, we'll get to the PowerPoint, not the copies of the-
Yes, the snapshot of the PowerPoint, right, yeah. Thank you.
But Tom, sorry, you were gonna say-
No, I do think, as Marty indicated, comparable districts have comparable charts. When we talk about our per pupil expenditure, I don't think we're that far off in terms of the state average, but I think in terms of comparison to other communities, we can get that, I do think we're probably a little higher than local surrounding communities.
So this, you know, the Student Opportunities Act is, it's, it's welcome news. I mean, I think that, I don't want that to be lost here. I, I think it, it appears to have the potential to help Long Meadow in some very important ways. I think we gotta understand that more, but from my perspective, this is welcome news.
Other questions, concerns? The, one thing I would say, finance sub, I think should add this to the next meeting you have as a agenda item. You know, I think the, the legislation as, as we did talk to Senator Lesser's office who went to the sponsors of the bill, came back to us and told us that it would help us out in definite areas. One, we confirmed that we would not be losing where we are today from a chapter 70 perspective. A few of the models that were out there that I did research on, including mass policy budget, had said we were going to lose chapter 70. That has been confirmed from Senator Lesser's office that the current form of the bill does not do that. We would, everybody would be grandfathered at least at what you have today from, from that percentage, which for us right now is 19 and a half percent, Tom?
It does change a little bit every year. I think we were just at about FY '20, just under 20.
It looks like we were like 17.5, 17.5, 17.5, then we went, I got my notes, to, I don't know, 18 something, and then went to 19 something, yeah. And I know there's a couple changes that might help us here too, like ELL I think is up in the district over the past, I mean, it's not gonna be a big, it's gonna be more than we're getting.
It's, it's single digits.
Right, well, we're not even single digit now, so, yeah. But, and then there was a circuit breaker that was in there for busing, there was more money for psychological and therapeutic services, which may help us as well, guidance. So the bill in itself, I don't think is a bad bill, I mean, it really does exist to help the larger gateway cities than it does the suburban cities, so, or suburban towns and cities. So I do think that some kind of call to action in the tax ceiling is asked us for, could we take a stance on sending a letter to Senator Lesser and to Representative Bash to say, "Hey, could you do something to help the high performing districts as well, maybe funding this at X percent per year?", which I don't think is an unreasonable ask. So all, I guess-
Which is, is it fair to say that our initial take on this new bill is that it might give us maybe an extra year or two until we hit the tax ceiling, but it doesn't address the fundamental problem that we've been talking about? Is that a fair read?
Yeah, we've got the tax ceiling discussion, so I mean, we can keep that open now, I can give a little report on where we were at the last meeting and, you know, basically we were talking about, the finance committee has come out, you should have got that, that email endorsing a 1.87 tax levy increase be put in place or a ceiling be put in place. They have proposed that to the select board, that buys us a runway of like 10 years if it was held there. That's considering a lot of different things hold, like property values don't go backwards or the economy doesn't slip and the income tax portion of the budget calculation doesn't go down. So, so there's, that was one thing we're talking about. There's a list of projects that are being talked about, could those have an effect? And there's two schools on the ceiling task force, there's the, hey, the only answer is a legislative solution for getting the ceiling removed so that we can be Long Meadow and continue to be, you know, provide top-notch services to our civilians, who are all taxpayers and residents. But there's also a healthy debate around, you know, could five $200,000 projects buy us another year, buy us another two years? So we've had talks about that, like, you know, some of those things were, you know, Mark Gold had a great presentation on the streetlights, oh, that was gonna save us like 200 grand a year after they're paid off. Or the, a town-based internet and cable system, you know, what would that bring in every year? So a whole list of projects. So the other, the other side we're talking about was the legislative solution and we had, we had a conversation about what could we do to, to hold, you know, hold off that tax ceiling some more and one was the legislative solution. I brought the point and I think other people, I think Pete brought that up earlier, is what's the incentive for the legislature or senator that's, let's say, in Concord or Lexington, where the rate's like $11? Like, what is their incentive to, to, to vote for a bill that raises the tax ceiling? There is none. I mean, quite frankly, in my opinion, that's political suicide for a senator in a different per, you know, place, they're going to get attacked by various foundations out there that just have a problem with, they're not really increasing taxes, they're allowing a town to consider its own future, but unfortunately, that's not how it may play out and I think that's gotta be taken into the formula of, how do you convince somebody else that this is a good thing for, for them and for the whole state? And the other thing is, you know, the gateway cities don't have this problem. I mean, 90% of their budgets are just coming from the, the state already, so coming up with, you know, the other 10% isn't as big an issue as hitting the tax ceiling where that resides outside of the tax ceiling. So that was, that was the whole meeting in a nutshell that I can remember from my update. Marty or Tom?
No, I think that captures it, a range of solutions, I think most people rallied around the idea that it ought to be a multi-pronged approach.
Yeah, and we did toss around, you know, additional, one additional thing was like, do we exclude pension liability from the town budget? Or do we exclude benefits liability from the town budget and put that outside of the budget as, you know, kinda like an enterprise fund almost, but, but it was, it was voted to not do that or not pursue that. The number one pursuit was the legislative, legislative action and then two was they were looking for our call to action of writing up a letter of support to our senator and representative to, to, you know, ask for more funding in the, the current bill.
Was there a discussion about like a certain percentage or was it just a letter sent to the representatives asking for a minimum?
It's, I would say the tax ceiling task force did not take any votes or-
It just kinda-
They said they were waiting for us to take the lead on what we would request, you know, for the longest time, you know, Mr. Landen has asked that we request 25% and, you know, he's pretty up to, on, on most of these issues, but now he's asking 35% and, you know, I, I don't know what the proper number is, I think that- I think that's a good discussion, you know, for it, for us, I think, you know, 25% gets us probably three or four more years on the tax ceiling, you know. 35% probably gets us good out for, helps the town out for probably 10 years without holding the 1.87. But we got to run those numbers, like, you know, just, you know, it's just kind of mental math right now. But all that would, 25 or 35 would definitely help.
I have one last question.
Yeah.
Just because I was at the meeting. Was there any discussions or appetite for growing the tax base? Or was that not even a point of contention at the meeting?
No, that's in that long list of things we've talked about, you know, the property on the water tower, is that, you know, is that good for development? Other properties in town that might be good for development, you know, more senior housing, a lot of different ideas out there trying to grow them.
Down further on the list, the top two are the ones you had?
I wouldn't say they're the top two. I don't think there's a order in the list. I think they're just ideas thrown out on a whiteboard to consider. I think there is acknowledgement amongst most of the people on the board that tax growth isn't really going to happen all that much because we don't have that much land or anything left to develop here.
But I think to Kevin's question, all of the solutions that were discussed were very small impacts and maybe get a year or two, but don't address it long term. And I think to your question, Kevin, even with the proposed change, I don't, it's not going to give us years' worth of relief. Not even a year. You know, it may, may result in a couple hundred thousand more than what we normally see. But historically, we only would see an increase in chapter 70 of the minimum, which was a per pupil amount. The last few years, we've seen a substantial increase in the amount of chapter 78. So hopefully we do continue to see that, but I think in terms of the overall picture, you know, all of the things that were discussed were not significant enough to really push it out 10 years. I think the cap that Mr. Landon spoke about and Chairman Ray is probably the route I think the town might have to consider. It's going to be a multi-year process, I think, to address this.
And I would say that, you know, while those projects are small and give us two or three years or one or two years, it does give us one to three more years of getting other towns closer to the limit, where then we can start to build momentum as opposed to, you know, a town of 15,000 out in Western Mass, you know, west of 495 and people are like, eh, it's not affecting us. But we, building momentum, I think, is a big part of the, and building partners and networking is going to be huge on this. Yes.
So that was my follow-up question, like, who are the other towns that are grappling with this, right? Like, who are our obvious partners to work with?
From what we see out there, there's nobody like in the Long Meadow...
So we are unique.
We are unique. The closest one that would be up against the limit would be somebody like a Springfield. But because their funding comes 90% from the state, again, they don't have the same issue as we do that if they hit the tax ceiling, they still get 90% of their black line from the state.
Interesting. So there's not even anybody like in Worcester? You're talking just Western Mass, you're thinking?
Western Mass, I mean, you could go out on the, on, yeah, look at the limits, yeah.
Wilbraham and East Long Meadow are... Getting close. Yeah.
They were what, like, three to five years away or something like that?
They're just getting more saved by commercial, I'm assuming? Yeah, in their, right, in their tax... They're a little different now. Their levy rates not as high to begin with, maybe perhaps because of their opportunities for new growth. That would be my guess.
But I think that what you said earlier, Marty, has to come and be forefront is that this is not a Long Meadow spending problem. That's, that is where I think all of our citizens can be rest assured, this is not a spending problem. This is a tax levy issue that basically nobody thought back in 1980 that, you know, by the year 2019, that the rate of inflation and expenses was going to be, you know, that $25 was going to be good forever and didn't index it to anything besides the two and a half and then put a cap at 25 for who knows why. But if you, you know, Mark Gold has some really good charts showing the spending of Long Meadow against comparable towns, both Eastern and Western Mass. If you look, our line is like flat and on the bottom of the graph and everybody else is like on an upward trajectory. So it is not a, it, you know, we always spend, you know, because we expect services in this town, but it's not like a, you know, unfettered spending that's happening.
And if property taxes or if property values go down, we hit that ceiling faster.
That is correct. Yep. Or recession hits and incomes go down. So those are two big components, are the property tax and the income tax. Good? So Finance Sub, okay, taking that? Just getting a letter of recommendation of what we'd like and then, okay. I think the preliminary votes are scheduled for the beginning of October, so just giving you guys that as a heads up. Okay, going back to the agenda, I do not have a report. LPVEC?
Just a couple things. We had our first meeting last week. LPVEC took part in DESI compliance and fiscal review to ensure the collab is complying with applicable state laws and regulations. The review went very well with DESI only providing one recommendation, so the LPVEC was very pleased with the report. Also, they received an award from the Association of School Business Officials International, a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the fiscal year 2018-19, which was also very exciting for them. Thank you.
Questions for Bronwyn? Okay. Do you have any LPVEC Corporation or anything? Okay. No ongoing business, new business. So there's three of us going to the MASC, MASSS conference. None of us will be there afternoon on Friday, so we will not have a delegate at the, at the conference in the afternoon. But in your packet is the resolutions that the MASC is taking up for your information. If you have any questions or concerns about it, let me know or let Marty know and we can, we can discuss this as a committee. There is no executive session planned for this evening. So before we go, I wanted to say two things, or three things. One, Coach Simons, great job. So proud to be able to recognize her tonight for her time and her service to the youth of this town. Two, the school committee meeting scheduled for October 8th is being moved to October 10th, which is a Thursday due to the holiday on October 8th. And that's it. I would now recognize any motions.
I move that the school committee adjourn the September 24, 2019, school committee meeting.
Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, a call for a vote, all in favor? Thank you and have a great evening.